If you'll hit that center button right out there for me, Dennis, that's great. Thank you. Gentlemen, this is Dennis Bucy. This morning, we need to officially ask for an appointment, and I'm going to ask at this time for a motion to appoint Dennis Bucy as our Veterans Affairs Officer. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second? Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, and we appreciate what you've done in your short period of time already, so thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, Dennis, you're here to make an appointment to the color guard, correct?
They're going to speak for themselves.
Okay. Gentlemen? It's fine, wherever. Wherever you're comfortable, Ed.
I got a lot of voice.
Okay.
Okay, you've all got copies of this. I'll let you go ahead and read it out. Got them. I won't take up too much of your time. First, will we still have access to use the service vehicle for our military funerals? Next, if we need money to purchase items for the Honor Guard members, do we have to go through a commissioner first? Or can we just submit a bill and receive the money to get the items which we need to get more quickly? We need raincoats for our members. Tried three different years to get the raincoats, I've never got nothing done. Now, since I'm in charge, I want to get that. I know a lot of members getting sick, I'm getting them over here. I feel our honor guard is very important to our community. We all need to honor and respect our veterans' past. We donate our time to do the funerals, just for the families of the fallen or fallen car drivers. If you set up an appointment with the Honor Guard, we don't want to get all this breaking out, so it's on their reading command now. That's all I have.
Okay. And I'm going to speak briefly on this. We do have a budget that Dennis works with. I personally have not been in a liaison to the Veterans Department. That has been either one of these two gentlemen in previous... By the way, both these gentlemen, excuse me, Bob wasn't, it was Dale, I think, New Boys, and then Joel. These two gentlemen are veterans that are sitting up here, so I'm sure that they're going to, as me as well, willing to help in any way we can. I'm going to ask Sheila to maybe step in here a little bit. The budget for those type of items, I don't know that fall in that category necessarily, maybe in the...
He's got supplies, but there's only $400 in supplies, so we even need to ask for an additional appropriation through the council to increase these some to pay for it. There might be a little extra in the salary, but that would come up after the council meeting.
We could possibly transfer some out of the vehicle line as well.
Correct.
So, yeah, there are some options, and thank you for that, Sheila. Another thing that we might be able to do is possibly look at some ARPA funds. So, yeah, I don't see a problem with any of these things. It's just going to take a little bit of time as we're making this transition. Dennis is learning. Joel will be working with him to make these moves for you, but absolutely, whatever we need to get done.
I almost told you we had $4,000 in the account for our honor guard, is that true?
I believe that is true. Let me look here. I went through that last night.
Veterans Honor Guard has $4,236. But you would still need to go to the council to get a specific appropriation. We can get you on the agenda for Monday night, the 12th. Until then, we could use out of the regular Veterans Fund if we needed to, and then just transfer back into it. Anytime you turn a claim in, if it's not in the normal claims process, we can contact the commissioners to do an immediate out cycle claim, so that you can get your check usually the same day. We just have to vet everything through the commissioners.
For the raincoat, we need to get the bill turned in.
You would need to submit a claim to get rid of it.
Get the money in over.
Yes. And everything we do, Ed needs to make sure that it goes through Dennis for the appropriate...
I'll talk to Dennis first.
Correct. That way, if he has to come to the council meeting for additional appropriation, everybody knows what's going on. And he can work with me, Joel, whatever needs to be done to make sure that those things happen. And while we're speaking, Greg in the Highway Department has helped us out and jumped in and got the van repaired and back on the road. I think it's been delivered back to the veterans. It's in the process. Okay.
It's in the process, it's done.
It's done.
Yeah. Greg told me the other day it was done, I just haven't got it delivered. When they deliver that van back, they're going to pick up the Explorer and get it up and running for us, or at least check it out and see what it needs, and we'll have a local repair shop fix it if they can't get it into the shop. They're just, they're slowed out there right now, some downtime, so we had them repair that van for us, for you guys. So we'll have both of those vehicles up and running.
Well, I still got a team from Van, where it's best we'll need number two to share with them.
Absolutely. And from what I understand, those vehicles didn't move at all last year. We had no transports, and I hope that we're going to fix that problem.
Yeah. Commissioner, it isn't none of my business, but I'd like to see the one thing for the van, I mean, bring it back immediately, but I'd like to see you allow us to take the veteran sign off the side. It looks really tacky, and put a new decal on the side of it. I don't think that would have my budget, but it's old, it's tattered, and it just needs sharpened up.
Absolutely. No, the Veterans Office has declined a little bit, so hopefully, we're going to bring it back up where it should be. So, no, absolutely.
Well, I'll give it to Dennis how he wants to come up with it, and we'll get that over and then it's in.
Sounds good. Thank you, Greg.
Dennis, if there's nothing else, we appreciate all of you. Thank you all very much, and we'll get things moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. All right. Timber cell update, and I'm going to let Sheila address this for us, since we had a change. We've reduced it from nine departments down to seven, and I'll have her explain why.
The list that we had received from DNR itself, the Owen Valley Fire Department, is now officially the Owen Valley Fire Territory. And Clay Township, same thing. The names were different, so they were listed twice on there. They corrected the amounts. They all received $3,059.14 each in the corrections from the original appropriations when there was a listing.
So with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to approve the change in pay to the seven departments instead of the nine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion by myself, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tax cell, Dana.
SRI resolution that is sitting there is what I put on there for the tax cell.
Okay.
That we came to your last meeting and asked, did you guys want to hold a tax cell this time around?
Correct.
And they've sent their paperwork that is required to do it, so...
Want to just have Dana touch on that real quick?
So, SRI has worked with the county for a long time, helping with the tax sales. They do a good job. Very effective, they're very easy to work with and responsible. So, there's a resolution, which would be 2024-003. And it is a resolution establishing the intent to conduct a commissioner sale to sell tax sale certificates for property that is severely delinquent in payment of property taxes. Whereas there are properties in Owen County that are severely delinquent in the payment of property taxes, having been offered for tax sales and which receive no bids equal to or in excess of the minimum sale price. The parcel numbers of those properties being attached are to this resolution as Exhibit A. Whereas there is an assessed value associated with those properties for taxation purposes, but no taxes are being collected, therefore causing a lower than expected tax distribution to those taxing units and taxing units districts within the properties that are located. Whereas the Owen County Commissioners desire to have these properties back on the tax rolls with taxes being collected, and whereas Indiana Code 6-1.1-4-6, et cetera, allows for the Owen County Commissioners to acquire a lien on those delinquent properties and receive issuance of the tax sale certificates for those properties without taking title to the properties, therefore limiting the liability and cost normally associated with taking the title. Now, therefore, if it is resolved by the Owen County Board of Commissioners, the county executive shall acquire means and receive tax sale certificates of the properties listed in Exhibit A that are severely delinquent, and sell said certificates at a properly advertised commissioner tax sale. And so those, Exhibit A would be available for anyone to review as they wanted to in the auditor's office. So, this needs your approval.
Thank you, Dana. All right, gentlemen, do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2024-003? A resolution establishing the intent to conduct a commissioner sale to sell tax sale certificates for property that is severely delinquent in payment of property tax. I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. Opioid update. Joel, do you want Sheila to speak on this, or do you want to jump in?
I spoke with Sheila, and we wanted to somewhat leave it the same as it had been. And certainly, if there's any other departments that feel they qualify, they can throw their name in half. And we believe that the departments that qualify currently are the only ones that we can fit into those departments. So, Sheila, if you'll go ahead, and I think the distribution's going to be the same, is it not?
The dollar amount distribution is, however, the 911 and probation have did MOUs with the Sheriff's Department to go toward the SRO officer at the school. Still, the exact amount of monies that they got, they're just working together and did internal, and as far as that.
And I don't have a problem with that. I don't think my fellow commissioners do as well. That's an arrangement they made. It's all going to the same cause. But out of fairness to the qualifying departments, I think we should, the initial distribution should be the same. And then after that, you know, they can work with the Sheriff's Department if they'd like.
The new funds that, again, we've not received the 2024 amounts yet, when that amount comes in, we can send it out to the same, you know, if they have a letter of request, then they can submit them in pretty much the same process. Again, it's not going to be as much, so it might be that it's just deemed for the SRO each year, so that we know that that's a long-term position. And remember, this is an 18-year grant cycle, so...
And I do want to note to those, when we speak of other departments working with Sheriff White, and that is due in part because he started a program, and Sheriff, if you don't mind, if you'd share updates or how that's going?
So, I have a meeting, a council meeting, to get the, to approval of the position, but what we've utilized the money for through the three departments, mine and probation and dispatch, is to fund an SRO who is a DARE officer. The criteria for the opioid settlement money is very specific on what it can be used for, and it is designed to be preventative, used to prevent drug use and opioid overdose. Our program with the DARE is approved through the Governor's Office, which all these funds are through the Governor's Office. And it is one of the approved methods, and what it will do is, our officer will have a schedule, and every week, actually multiple days in a week, he will have to teach the DARE curriculum in the schools, which the school has approved, and said that they want, they want this program in their schools. It's proven across the nation that this has reduced drug use in communities, and the best target is our youth. If we can target our youth to not get started on it, then we don't have the problems that we have in law enforcement today, dealing with the adults who are stealing and doing all the different crimes that are related to drug use. So, this program will help reduce crime overall, but it also targets our most vulnerable and our most prized possession, the SRO youth. Again, it's very specific on what the funds can be used for, and this is within that criteria.
We'd spoke earlier about this program and this funds for 18 years. I would like to see us just go ahead and make a commitment to that program for the next 18 years, this fund just automatically goes to that program.
I don't think you can, I don't think there can be a better use of the money, honestly. Again, if we can target our kids and we can get our kids to not go down that path, then the long haul for our community is we won't have drug addicted adults, because they started in their youth.
Absolutely.
And then it progresses later on. If we can get that stopped here, now, when they're young, then we win as a community.
Sheriff, what grades are you targeting?
It goes through all grades.
Okay.
It goes through all. We have an elementary, and a middle school, and a high school curriculum.
And Ryan, also while you're up here, we spoke, you and I had spoke about some ARPA funds for an additional dog.
Yes, sir.
We have done some looking here with improper words there, sorry, but we have taken a look at the unrestricted funds and the opioid money, and there's some money available there. And I think instead of tapping into ARPA funds that we can use for other projects, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve $14,000, roughly is what you've requested. It may be less.
Maybe less, maybe a few more, but not much.
Exactly. To use those funds to pay for this, for the department.
And we have found the dog is being shipped from Serbia, but we've got videos on him. He's a fantastic dog. He's already been sent, impressed, they've impressed the sense on him, and he's somewhat trained, but not fully off. Obviously, he's not certified until he comes here and passes the United States horses. But Charlie will be the handler again, and Charlie's excited, and he looks like a fantastic dog.
Charlie lost his dog here last month, I guess it was, so it'll be replacing that dog. Gentlemen, have you had discussions on this, or...
I do not. I'll make that motion, Gary, of using $14,000 ARPA funds towards Sheriff's Department.
Opioid.
Opioid.
Just want to make sure we get that correct in our motion.
Unrestricted opioid funds for Sheriff to purchase a new dog.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan. ARPA funds, of course, we have Ryan on the agenda for that. We've taken care of. Chris, you want to come up for just a second, or you can sit there where you're at, whatever you need to do.
So, Gary had asked me to look into the radio project that was started under Kathleen Lamb, our 911 director that has moved on. And the best I can tell, and Sheila did a lot of the legwork for me, and Sheila, you jump in if I'm wrong, but the best I can tell, it's, the funding for this project has been approved by the commissioners and the council, but we've never had anything signed to send back to Barry Reeder. Is that right, Sheila? That's why I've seen it also. So, and what this project does, we have had a history of... The VHF radio system the county uses for EMS and fire departments, when you get out very far out of Spencer, you just can't hear. We've went with the advice of some vendors and done some alterations to the system, trying to get it fixed, to no avail. So, rather than keeping on throwing money at it, we wanted to have some, somebody that doesn't have any skin in the game of selling us anything, you know, any more radio equipment, have some professionals look at it, do an assessment on the radio system, and tell us what we need to do to get it fixed. So, that's what that project is. Like I say, you guys have already approved ARPA money for it. It's went to the council. They approved it. We just need a signature on this paper here.
There's one signature required.
Just a minute, I can say it now. I believe it had...
The total dollar amount was $55,501.
That's close.
That's got four lines. And Barry's date is wrong up here.
He had, I believe he had 20...
13.
Oh, he got 2013. Can we just correct the year, Dana?
I'm sorry, I was...
The contract that came, or the agreement that came, they presented it April 12th of 2023, however, they put 2013. Can we just...
You can correct it initially. It's a scribbler's error.
I can make that, and put it in the motion if you need to.
How many copies of this do you want?
I don't, we just need...
We need two. We need one original for this office, and then you need to send him an original signed too.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Owen County LMR system assessment and upgrade. This has already been approved by the commissioners and the council. This total project fee has $55,100. That's what's on this contract. So, I'm just reading what's on here. We'll figure it out, I guess, when we send it to him. There is a typographical error with the date, so I'm going to motion. I need to make sure we change that to the current date. So, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion here to approve the LMR contract at $55,100, amending the date to 2024 from 2013.
Thank you, Joel. I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Got two copies of this, guys. Go ahead, Chris.
Do you want me to...
While you're up there, you might as well just go ahead and go through your...
That's what I was going to do, was what, keep this all ARPA right now or not? So, just to let you guys know, the two ambulances that we have ordered, hopefully by the end of this month, I'll be going to New Jersey to drive that one that we had remounted back. The projected date is February 22nd. The salesman said I had a week to that, so February 29th. I'm glad it's a bleak year. We'd have to wait a little bit here, so... So, hopefully, by the end of this month, I'll be going out and getting an ambulance remount. And then the ambulance that we ordered last January, that we were told that it would be two years before we got it, we're anticipating, if everything goes good, that ambulance will be ready for delivery at the end of March, so at the end of next year, or now, I'm sorry, next month. So, that's going to help us out a lot with the problems we've been having with our ambulances breaking down. So, that will be a much-needed couple pieces of equipment for us. So, the ambulance is coming brand-new from Medics in March. Does not have a power load system in it. If you remember, we've got five ambulances. When we used the federal money to purchase power load systems, we only got four, because we knew that one ambulance was going to be going away, so why put a brand-new power load system in it just to use two or three times and then trade in? So, this ambulance that's coming in March will need a power load system in it. I've got a quote here for the power load system, and the reason I'm kind of wanting to push this is, if we can get it ordered now, it'll be set in here before the ambulance comes in March. And my hopes are, with a quote for $1,600 to have it installed, if we get that truck in March and the power load system's set in here, and we already have a contract with the people to install it, hopefully, we can have it in service before April 8th, which is the eclipse. That'll give us, make sure we've got a good, solid fleet for that eclipse. So, that's what I'm coming to you guys for today, is ARPA money for the power load and the installation for that fifth ambulance.
Thank you, Chris. Hey, Chris is right. We spoke about this before. It was cheaper to purchase it after the fact and have the manufacturer put it in there. Chris and I spoke and asked about ARPA funds, and I think we all agree that this is an important part of the EMS. As you guys know, I made you a cheat sheet this... important part of the EMS. As you guys know, I made you a cheat sheet this morning on the ARPA funds available and what, what they're being spent for. Uh, I've estimated thirty-five thousand dollars for, for this power assist. I think it's gonna be just a little bit less than that. But with Chris's proposal, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the power assist unit for the EMS to be paid out of ARPA funded approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make that motion to have the EMS power load for thirty-five thousand and have the ARPA funds.
Have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, um, the only other thing I have is, um, our, our billing company contacted me earlier or late last week and, um, they're concerned that with what we're charging for ambulances, for ambulance transports, that we may be leaving some money laying on the table. In other words, if we charge five hundred dollars for, uh, a BLS emergent transport to the hospital, there's some insurance companies that may pay five hundred and twenty, whatever. They think that our, our, um, the amount that we charge is too low when you look at the industry, um, and that we may be leaving money laying on the table when it comes to billing insurance companies. Because we all know if you bill an insurance company five hundred dollars and they say they would have paid five hundred and fifty, they're not gonna send us that extra fifty just on good graces. So I've looked at the, the most current ordinance I could find, uh, was signed by Michael Wood. So that was twenty-fourteen. So it's been a while since we've raised our, our rates. And you guys all know that the price of everything has went up. Um, so I don't have any, um, suggestions yet on the prices, uh, but I'll work on that. And if it's okay with you guys, bring it back to you in the next meeting and, uh, we'll look at that. I don't anticipate huge increases or huge projected increases. Um, but just to give you guys a little bit of information, we had one of our guys that worked for us. His son got in a wreck in Bloomington and, um, they transported him, I think, seven miles to the hospital. It's over eleven thousand dollars. So I don't anticipate even looking at that amount, but, um, because right now for like a, a, a basic life support emergent transport's five hundred dollars through us. I don't anticipate even getting close to that, but, um, you know, I think we do need to increase a little bit.
Chris, I think you showed me that paper. They've got some suggested amounts, but obviously you can adjust those accordingly to your thought process and the county's.
Yeah. So that's all I've got unless you guys have any questions, comments.
I've got it off the wall. Now that we're getting these two ambulances back in service, are you looking for a third already?
Uh, not yet. Um,
Because we know the length of time it takes to, for this process.
Yeah.
To, to happen. And I know you want to start a rotational. It's just a thought.
Yeah, I definitely want to get back in the rotation that we were doing before, uh, before COVID. Um, the reason I really haven't started looking is I, I don't know. I talked to Gary and I don't, I don't think I called you guys back a week and a half ago. We had an accident with one, uh, where we went from pavement onto gravel and it was a sheet of ice and we ended up in a ditch. Um, I don't know where that's gonna end up yet, if, if it's something that insurance is gonna fix or if it's gonna be a total. Um, so that's one reason I really haven't, is I want to find out what insurance is gonna do. Um, and then, yeah, as soon as we get them here, I would say early summer, I, I would be looking at another remount, looking at a remount, unless this one ends up being a total, which would, which would get us something new, so.
Yeah, that box wouldn't be able to be moved to something else, so. A box that's damaged wouldn't be able to, like I said, once it can repair.
The box is the issue there.
Right.
The damage on the box. The truck, not so much, but the box. I don't know if I would want to remount it, so.
Thank you, Chris. Excuse me. Mr. White?
Since we were declared, uh, on, on the first of April, after the tornado, actual presidential declaration to Owen County, we qualify for some hazard mitigation money. And the round number they're throwing our direction is a couple hundred thousand. Mr. Curry sat in the, uh, emergency management advisory council meeting the other night with, uh, we had two IDHS representatives attend by Zoom and they explained that this has a twenty-five percent match, which would be a cost of fifty thousand dollars in Owen County. However, there is an in-kind component to this. And I ask if donations from local businesses and the installation of utility poles by Electric Cooperative would qualify as that, for that twenty-five percent match. And I, I asked that question two days ago and I received an affirmative answer, uh, by email, so I have that in writing. However, uh, we cannot move at all on this next phase of sirens until the federal government gets all the paperwork ready and, and gives us their blessing on, on this mitigation grant. So I think now would be a, a good time for me to make an official statement to the commissioners that we are not in the middle of a siren project at this time. We have, we have concluded all our siren projects and if we're gonna do one, that will begin after we decide what this, what this grant, how this grant goes through the federal government. Sheila, could you please make sure that's noted? And, but with that being said, we have local rules and I think that's the very first place for me to start on this grant, especially with the fifty thousand dollar, uh, component that if we don't get everything donated and like that, that the county will be on the hook for the remainder of that money. I honestly think we can do it. Between the two things I just mentioned, uh, I, I think it's pretty possible that we can, we can get there without any additional cost to the county. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, that that, that is a possibility. That, that fifty thousand dollars is out there. So, uh, with that being said, I'm asking you to approve the, the application, uh, for the hazard mitigation grant. And I understand I'll have to go to county council also. I'm on that agenda as well.
Gentlemen, the request form that Jack has presented to us does require the president's signature for both council and commissioners. So as he said, he'll have to take this to the council as well. This particular form has Angie Lawson auditor on there. Uh, unfortunately, it's the, the form that was presented for Jack to, to use, uh, so that's gonna have to be corrected. Uh, so in a motion to approve, we need to make sure that we get that changed to Sheila Reeves auditor, uh, on this particular form. I don't know how we, we white it out, sign it in. Uh, just want to make sure that that's noted as well, that we get that taken care of. So, uh, with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, Jack White to move forward with the request for a two hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, for their emergency management in the, uh, use of a siren project? And that is basically, yeah.
Yeah.
That's basically what these funds are gonna be totally used for if accepted by FEMA, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll make that motion, Gary.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and part of the, the initial steps from the federal government will be you guys signing that fifty thousand dollar pledge. And, and I don't know what kind of language it'll have in it, but, uh, I'll be back when I get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Jack, do you want this form back before you leave? So you take it to council?
Uh, yeah, we'll have to white out with, with Sheila.
I'll give that back to you. I've already signed it.
Okay.
So you can either have her fix it down in her office or wait till the council meeting, however you want to deal with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're pretty responsible with these documents. How do I have to see it? Where are you gonna do it now?
I can, but I still need a copy of it for the council that I sent out.
I'm reading claims over a while. Let me see the copy.
Okay, I skipped over the quick claim deed. Uh, I'll let Dana deal with that. Uh, so everybody knows, we have a, an individual that, um, has a piece of property that literally is a county road, has been for many, many years, and they're paying taxes on that county road. Uh, she's tried for several years to get this taken care of. She called me some months back and, uh, I told her we'd, we'd get it done and today's that day. So, uh, we're gonna take over a county road that we already take care of.
Yes, the, uh, property owner is, uh, Vicki and I'm not sure if it's Bazeman or Bazeman, um, and, et al. And the parcel number for the record is sixty dash eleven dash sixteen dash one hundred dash zero two zero point three eight zero dash oh two two. And, uh, they will be transferring that property, uh, by quick claim deed, uh, to the, to the county. And as you say, it's a county road. So, uh, there's no consideration. It's just a transfer of ownership.
Hey Greg, do you know where this is at? I could give you the, it's.
I've reviewed everything, Dana.
Oh, you've already got everything. And, and again, we're not doing anything different. We're already taking care of the road. It's just, they've had this on their tax bill for several years. It's part of a subdivision that never properly got divided, is, is the way I'm gonna explain that. All right, thank you, Dana.
Yep. So there should be a vote accepted. For a deed to be valid, it has to be.
No signature, just vote?
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns on this, guys? Uh, do I hear a motion to approve quick claim deed, parcel number six, sixty dash eleven dash sixteen dash one hundred dash zero two zero three eight zero zero two two?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dana. Gentlemen, I'm gonna jump to the Intertech Pest Control Contract. This is something that we, uh, sign every year, covers all of the, uh, offices for pest control. The total contract is sixty-two hundred and seventy dollars. Is any questions or concerns? If not, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Intertech contract and Bob Curry to sign. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion?
Mr. Burton, can I have a moment here during the discussion?
Yeah.
Is the eighty-six East Market Street listed?
It is.
I haven't seen anybody for months.
We'll make sure that that happens, but it is on here.
Okay, thank you.
They've got it down. It's the old health building in EMA.
Okay.
Okay? And that charges thirty dollars a month. So if you do not see that person, you let us know, okay? Maintenance normally oversees this kind of stuff, but since we're gonna agree to this contract, if you got an issue, let one of us know.
Okay.
So there was a motion by myself, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Greg.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I'll start this with a updicked, uh, Bridge Fifty-two, uh, the bridge on Rattlesnake Road. Uh, the rehab has been completed. Uh, I went out and did the, uh, just a walk-through inspection with, uh, CLR and that contract. Uh, the bridge remains right now with the same load limit restrictions. Uh, I do have a request in to United Consulting to re-inspect the bridge. Uh, I expect everything to increase, uh, from there because of the rehab. Uh, there was a traffic accident on Rattlesnake Road, uh, Bridge Fifty-One, uh, had to have some major repair. Uh, we've been in contact with the insurance company. Uh, that is going to be, um, taken care of in regard to any monetary needs, uh, for the county, uh, by that insurance company, but the repairs have been made. They need to be made immediately, uh, to the tune of around seven thousand dollars. So, uh, we'll have that bridge re-inspected too.
All that's been turned into the insurance company and moving forward.
It has. Uh, Commissioner Burton, uh, I've spoke to Commissioner Burton, my liaison. I have a, uh, huge concern, uh, right now with Little Flock Road, commissioners. Uh, you know, when we had the detour on Patricburg Road and dealt with NDOT, um, we had proof in regard to traffic counts. Uh, there was proof with the information we had with sheriff's office and all the traffic and citations written and accidents. Uh, we received twenty-one thousand dollars from NDOT to repair that road. That was it. In two thousand and eighteen, uh, Little Flock Road, or half of it, was paved, uh, with CCMG money. And in two thousand and twenty, it was completed with CCMG money. We're getting ready to deploy counters and cameras on the road, but commissioners, that road is being destroyed, absolutely destroyed. It wasn't built to handle heavy truck traffic. Uh, it's, uh, classified as a minor collector and I believe we need to start the process now instead of it then with the attorney and the commissioners involved because, um, it is not Owen County's fault that NDOT had a problem with the bridge and it was a miscalculation on what needed to be done. So the road's been closed for this long length of time.
Greg, that bridge originally was a ninety-day project, correct?
That's correct.
That was what we were told by the state. And, and again, the state has dumped on Owen County heavily. We had a meeting with NDOT, county attorney, the commissioners, the highway superintendent, over the issues out on forty-six. And, and as Greg said, we came up with a total of twenty-one thousand dollars. This particular project is probably more in line to three to four hundred thousand dollars of destroyed road.
That is correct.
Commissioner Curry called me yesterday with several complaints in his district about the speed of and the amount of traffic. I spoke to Sheriff White yesterday requesting additional, uh, patrols out there in that area, uh, to, to slow the traffic down, uh, and to assure those citizens that we're aware of the problem out there. Uh, and we're addressing that and he assured me that, that he would make sure that those patrols are gonna happen. And, and more importantly, during the, those school bus hours of early morning and in the afternoon, uh, I, I think that their speeds on that road probably in excess of fifty, fifty-five mile an hour on a thirty mile an hour road. Uh, so we are aware of it. Uh, I will probably be contacting Tyler Warman at the governor's office to deal with this, uh, again. Uh, matter of fact, I plan on doing that today. I had tried to speak with the attorney earlier this week and we weren't able to get, uh, connected, but we'll, we'll move forward on this and, and address this, uh, because it is gonna be a huge expense to the county if the state doesn't step up. And they're gonna have to. And unfortunately, once this bridge is completed, whenever that may be, the bridge south of that is next on their schedule and that's not gonna help us either.
That is correct.
So we have two issues here, uh, on forty-three that's causing a tremendous amount of problems. So we will move forward and work with that. And again, I'll get with the governor's office and see what we can get done, uh, on that avenue.
Uh, commissioners, uh, continuing on with Little Flock Road, um, this of course is freeze fall weather. weather. I have the ability of the Highway Superintendent to enact load limits. Now, when we, those load limits are enacted, y'all need to realize that agriculture, agriculture is exempt. But, at this point in time, I believe we need to enact the ninety-day, eight-ton load limit on all the newly resurfaced roads, as well as Little Flock. Now that is ninety days, once it is locked in.
Do you have a list of those roads, Greg, that you want to attach that to?
The newly paved roads, I didn't bring a list with me, Little Flock was more on my mind.
Okay. Can we pick a timeline, the last three years, the last four years? I know that there are several community crossings roads out there that we don't want tore up.
I would say last three.
Last three years. Okay?
I will get you an entire list.
If we accept it as a three years, we can put that list in in that three-year period, so...
I will.
And then at that point, then we'll be up to the Sheriff's Department to help enforce those load limits, or those roads.
Now, I need to go one further, everyone needs to realize, logging operations are agricultural. So, even with this, I have, agriculture is exempt.
Do I like to make a motion on that behalf?
I'll make a motion that we place load limit on all past three years newly paved roads within Owen County to an eight-ton limit.
To include Little Flock.
To include Little Flock.
Because a portion of Little Flock doesn't fall into that, it was done in...
To include Little Flock.
You're talking about February first to April thirtieth?
February first to April thirtieth.
Got a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor? Aye. And that will include a list to all three of us from the Highway Superintendent, so if there is calls, we have that available.
And again, it's important, it's important to note, Greg said, agriculture and timber are exempt.
That is out of my control.
That's just what it, that's just how it's gonna be.
Commissioners, I can prepare a resolution to that effect, since you approved it, you can sign it out of the way. But, I'll make sure we get the road names, I'll give that to you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Commissioners. Grading and ditching is continuing right now, this time of year. Roads seem to eat gravel, so it's a constant, constant battle. I would encourage folks to call in and let us know if they believe that there's a problem. That way, we can get it on a work order, because the graders are working on their routes, but because of the moisture right now, you could work a road out today, and three or four days later, it's an issue, so I would encourage people to report the problems that they see. Okay, Commissioners, and everybody, one more chat. You've all seen these documents, and I've spoken to all of you separately, you asked me to put together a ARPA road request. Here's Chad, one more. For Freeman Road.
Is this different from that one?
I have attached, and this is one document you haven't seen. On August fourteenth twenty-three, the Highway Department deployed two traffic counters on Freeman Road. Counter one was placed at the north end, near the White River, and counter two was placed on the south end near Highway forty-three. On Monday, August twenty-third twenty-three, at one o'clock, counter one had recorded twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eleven vehicles, had crossed over in a seven-day period, averaging three thousand one hundred and thirty vehicles a day. On the other end of that roadway, on the forty-three end, counter two recorded ten thousand two hundred and ninety-seven vehicles had passed over in a seven-day period, with an average day of one thousand four hundred and forty-five vehicles per day. Commissioners, and it'll be read later, but Commissioners approve that Pottersville Road we paved via CCMG from Freeman Road to Stoltz, Stoltz Road. Thus, I believe that this ARPA funds request is appropriate from your input. Freeman Road from Veterans Bridge is three point three eight miles, seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven feet, requiring six thousand and twenty-four ton of pot mix. Now that's in a wedge level of one inch and a two-inch overlay. Estimated total cost for that is five hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. The... Normal drainage on that road that needs to be done, would be done out of our budget, any of the normal ditching, structure replacements, we would do out of budget. But I would like to go a little further in regard to drainage, that I would make a request out of these funds. From River Road to Hilltop Road, and that is basically known as Freeman Hill, to everybody that asks. This has been a long time issue for the Highway Department, emergency services, and the traveling public. This drainage project through that area would allow us to place a four-foot firm in the apex of a hill, as well as providing proper drainage. We would add, estimate approximately four hundred ton of clay, two hundred ton of rip rap, sixty ton of fifty-three stone, for an added cost of five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. A little further, as you know, the, that hill is our first and major problem in the county in regard to slide-offs and accidents, the minute there is any, any kind of winter moisture. It even has summertime problems during rain. We believe that the best thing to do is, after asphalt is laid on that hill, from River Road to the top, is lay a number eleven chip seal. I've included the tack, everything we need to do that, as well as fog seals, so when it's done, the road will be black, just like the blacktop. This is going to allow for extra traction. And also, what we call the road shine, where the road, you know, over a period of time driving, it is gonna leave a little bit rougher surface. The roadway would also, that would be an added cost of three thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-one cents, and Commissioners, that would be done in-house by us. The HMA, I would ask that that be contracted. The road would also have a single double-yellow line down the center, like hardscrabble. Whether it makes a difference or not, I will say that hardscrabble was paved with ARPA money. Monroe County has a new road all the way into Ellisville, you know, so the motoring public can drive from Owen, out of Owen County right now, from State Road forty-three all the way into Ellisville on their commute, on a very good roadway. I think, thus, I'm requesting that you approve five hundred seventy-six thousand seven hundred six dollars and forty-one cents out of ARPA money to resurface Freeman Road.
Any comments, gentlemen? Greg did allude to that we did Hardscrabble Road, year before last, I believe it was, on community crossings, in part for the school corporations to run those buses on that back road and get them out of the highway there to blink a light, and that has helped tremendously. I know there's still a few buses that come out there to the light, but for the most part, they come down to forty-three to the stoplight, and that has helped out there tremendously. And Greg is correct, if we move forward with this most traveled road in the county from Veterans Bridge to forty-three, there now is a perfectly paved road from the town of Spencer all the way through to Monroe County or the town of Ellisville. How do you look at it? We have a lot of people that commute, that don't use the highway, and if there is an issue with the highway, which we know what that's like, last year when it was shut down many times for repaving things, we have an alternate route for our citizens, so I'm highly in favor of this.
Absolutely.
And with that being said, I would like to hear a motion to approve Freeman Road ARPA proposal to be repaved for a total of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and six dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll make that motion, Gary.
Did I say it wrong? I'm sorry, five seventy-six, on the back page, five seventy-six seven oh one forty-one, I'm sorry. And Joel made the...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, got a motion by Joel?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor? Aye. I will make comment that I ran a quick sheet for all of us here with ARPA balance, with Sheila's help, of course. As of today, we had one, one million four hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars available. Out of that, already been approved, is two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for twelve-mile chip and seal to cover the existing community crossings and/or Millings Roads that we've laid down the last few years for additional protection. Also, the nine-one-one feasibility study for the radio was approved, fifty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand this morning for EMS, and now this right here, five hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and six dollars.
Commissioners, I had spoken to you also about the purchase of a tractor with a mower trim and trading off the Massey Ferguson tractor that we had. And I, there would seem to be a consensus that I bring that forward in regard to ARPA. Do you wish I'd do that, or do you want to?
Yeah, please. I must these gentlemen have got something else?
I don't, we need it.
Yeah, thank you.
It's hardly in question, really, other than you might explain to the listening public what it is exactly we're gonna get rid of, and what it is we're gonna purchase, Greg, you're not gonna need any resistance here.
Okay, a little explanation, Commissioners, last year, all three of our mowing apparatuses were broken down at one time, parts were hard to get. We set at one time for, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, six weeks, with the only mower running on county roads, the bat wing mower that we used to mow landfills, et cetera. We ended up having to hire a contractor, spent right at forty-one thousand dollars to do that. Mower trims are up and running, we have a relatively new, new Holland. Long story short, the tractor is good, but we'd had to do major, major, major repair to the mower trim. So we've replaced the arms, we've replaced the hydraulic pump, and I'm confident the new Holland machine is fine for the next year. Our side mower is a Rhino that, I really can't tell you when you look at our inventory, when it was purchased, but I can tell you Russell Ross operated the machine, so that's how long it's been there. It wore out, we put it back together, we put it back together, we put it back together, until mine tend to run until I can't put it back together. But we do have a new flail side mower coming from Mullen Equipment, that is Sourcewell. So, we will be good there, I believe. In 2018, it may have been seventeen, but I know when the lease began. The Highway Department leased a Massey Ferguson tractor with a mower trim on it. The tractor is an eighty horsepower tractor with a large boom, and it's got a twenty-foot boom on it. It just broke down, more than it runs. Looks really good, but we own it, and we, I've put a lot of money into it to try to keep it running, and we just can't seem to run it. Anytime that we put it back out, it's broke down again, so we have it repaired and it's setting. Commission indicated they would like to see that tractor traded off. So, we went searching, Sourcewell, John Deere with a Tiger mower out of Wright Implement. It is Sourcewell, so it's pre-negotiated price throughout the state, this, basically, gentlemen, it's just what they are. With our trade-in of twenty-five thousand dollars for the Massey Ferguson tractor, the total price for this mower trim is a hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Then you add the mower machine to it, and we're at one eighty-seven ninety-four? That's what I'm looking at?
One eighty?
Yeah, one eighty-seven ninety-four.
Seven ninety-four.
Total?
Yeah, that is correct.
And Greg, you're right, previous administration, before any of us were here, this tractor was bought in 2018. Eighty-horse tractor wasn't near big enough to do the job, should've never been purchased to do this job. And again, we've had trouble with it from day one, it's broke down constantly. Last year, in the summer, all three of our machines were down at one time, and as Greg alluded to, we had no choice but to hire outside contractors to help us out. We get as many, if not more, complaints about side road brush, limbs, grass out in the road, summer and fall, than we do probably puddles. It's a, it's a safety concern, it is a huge problem countywide, and so this piece of equipment is essential to keep in our county roads safe for our taxpaying citizens. And with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve an ARPA proposal for the John Deere six, sixty-one ten, and that's a hundred and ten horse tractor, that will do the job? It will last us for many years, at a total of a hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty cents, that is including the trade. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Gary.
Have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second? Have a second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that added amount, that puts the balance left in the ARPA funds at three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. And it's a recommendation of this board, yep, three hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That we pass this money on to the county council, they have yet to put an ARPA proposal together for the county, and I think it would be proper for them to take these funds and see what they can do for the county, and I'm not talking about spending this money on day-to-day operations. We have budgets for that. I'm talking about putting it back to the taxpayers where they're utilizing it, they can see it. So that's our recommendation. And I'm saying that correctly, gentlemen? We're all in agreeance on that moving forward? So that's where we're at with ARPA funds, just a little bit shy of $400,000 left. So we're going to move that money on to the council and see how they feel best to spend it for the taxpayers. Obviously, whatever proposal they come up with has to come back to us for approval. But, all right, Greg, what else?
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. A lot of your time today, but we need to submit an accepted 2024 maintenance and improvement plan. A little explanation, once this plan is approved, if you approve a road to be done in a certain manner, and for whatever reason it can't be done in the year 2024, it has been the history of this board to move it to the following year. Just so folks know, this report will be turned over to LTAP. It has to be signed by the Commissioners and attested to by the auditor. It speaks of our mission. Then we give it an annual plan, explains grading and maintenance, dust control, and then resurfacing. I'm going to go ahead and touch base a little bit on resurfacing a little farther than just going over, because I know you've all read this, and it's quite lengthy. This year, the Commissioners have already approved, out of budget, no, excuse me, out of ARPA, the following roads to be, have coal mix applied. Now, these roads are either gravel roads or roads that are in such dismay that they have no road base left, so we will run a road reclaimer over them, put road base back in, and then put a surface over top. And Commissioner District 1, Marley Road from State Road 67 to Ramona Road. Commissioner District 2, from State Road 43 to the county line road. Commissioner District 3, Oberholsa Road from Smithville Road to Ormond Road. Commissioner District 3, Otterby and Church Road to the county line, from the county line to Smithville Road. All right, and then we'll move to hard surface, other hard surface. Commissioners, I want, and this is also ARPA approved money, and it is chip seal. Chip seal will be done in-house. We have a chip box, so we will, therefore, we will handle that, and that will be McFerrin Road from Fiddler Road to Childers Road, Smith Road from Jones Road to Childers Road, Shepherd Patrick Road from Texas Pike to Rattlesnake, Stockton Road from Beach Church Road to Dalton Road, and Bussady Road from 157 to State Road 157. Now, Commissioners, these roads have all been done with community crossing monies, and really what we're doing, we're resealing these roads to preserve their integrity. And that's just a little under 12 miles. Commissioners approved up to 12 miles, and it's 11-something, and we'll just see how far it goes. And then you have approved HMA, and Farmer's Road is a carryover for 2023. Then we have Freeman Road, proposed, ARPA-funded. Spot paving repairs, where we actually get the paper out and do spot paves. We have Q Not Cataract Road from State Road 42 to down to Cataract, that's Commissioner District 1. Commissioner District 2, P Ridge Road from Pottersville Road to Timber Ridge Road. And Commissioner District 3, Eganoff Road from Mall Road to Jackson Road. And then Stockton Road from Lake Creek to Stupanville. Gentlemen, if funds are available and there are time, there are other CCMG roads that have been done that need a little attention to make sure that they are preserved, but funds and time are going to be our constraints. And then I want to talk about the 2024 Commissioner-approved CCMG resurface request. This year, we were able to obtain, we haven't obtained it yet, but apply for $1.5 million. The council approved the added funds so we could apply for the full amount of monies to pave roadways if the grant is received. Commissioner District 1, the request is for Jones Road from Quincy Road to Cole Ross Road, Truesdale Road from Stone Mountain Road to Jones Road. Commissioner District 2, Pottersville Road from Freeman Road to Stoots Road, Franklin Street in Freedom from State Road 67 to Limestone Street. Methodist Church Street in Freedom from State Road 67 to the Southern Indiana Railroad. And Commissioner District 3, Splinter Ridge Road from Patersonburg Road to Stoots Road, and Pleasant Hill Road from Splinter Ridge Road to Owen County Bridge 101. Commissioners, I believe you've all read the document. It's in entirety after it's signed. I'd like to make it available to the public. I'll put it out, public can pick it up at my office. I will make it available on the county website, and I'll also have it placed here at the next Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you, Greg. Any comments or concerns on this plan, gentlemen? I know we've all worked on it and been through it, and that being said, do I hear a motion to approve Owen County Highway Department annual report for 2024?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a copy here. Do you need me to...
Thank you, Commissioners. Want to address surplus? I've sent you all an email in regard to the equipment that we need to surplus, and then I've, you've just been provided with a copy, so I guess we'll need a resolution or an ordinance from Dana to do that. Safe transparency, we'll be surplusing a 2004 International Dump Truck with a snowplow model 7300, a second 2004 International Dump Truck with a snowplow 7300, a 2006 GMC Sierra 4x4 pickup, a Rosco chip spreader, a Ford F-350, four-wheel-drive dump truck, and a 2006 Ford F-450. Excuse me, the 350 is a pickup, and the 450 is a 4x4 dump truck. Commissioners, just so you're aware, all of this snow equipment has either been stripped or been stripped from the 2009 F-350, as well as the bed, in the same way with the 2006 F-450. They will just be cabs and chassis.
Greg's provided all the VIN numbers here and model numbers, so Dana, if you'll put together a resolution for that, and at the next meeting, we'll get this approved. Sure many people don't know, a few weeks back, we had a snow truck go down. Thank goodness we didn't get the snow that we'd anticipated, but we made an emergency purchase of a dump truck. Greg, you want to elaborate on that for me? I can't remember exactly what it was.
Yeah, we purchased a 2005 dump truck, F-750, snowplow ready, it was a snowplow on it, the spreader box on it, caterpillar engine, yeah, caterpillar engine, and Allison transmission.
That was a one-owner vehicle?
One-owner vehicle, and we purchased that for $49,000.
Yeah, we purchased that for $49,000. What we had done at the time, the two pickup trucks, it's already been approved, have been moved back to about six months for delivery, so we used some of those funds to purchase this truck, and the intent is to recover the majority of those funds with this surplus sale.
Yes.
So...
We can ratify that by vote of that purchase.
Okay, that's right. We discussed that as well. We did that in administrative function, but we just...
Absolutely.
Do I hear a motion to approve the purchase of that 2014? Is that correct?
Five.
Five, 2005 dump truck from Vollmac out of Terre Haute.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay. Commissioners, I'm going to read into several documents into the road plan, but I have one that I'm going to give you all a copy of that I'm going to ask for vacation, or vacation, I need to vacate a road. And it's in Commissioner District 3. And Commissioners, I'm speaking of Roland Road, Roland Road from, I'm talking, .81 miles or 4,277.2 feet. Of Roland Road hasn't been maintained in many, many years. Both sides of that road is encompassed by one farm. No other land touches that area of the road. Right now, the road dead ends, so I would ask that .18 or 4,277.2 feet of Roland Road from Marion to where the dead end is be taken off of inventory and vacated.
And we haven't done anything with this road of any kind, or maintenance of any kind?
Uh, you know, Commissioners, I'm, my family's from that area, Denmark Road area. I can't remember ever being open through there. You can't hardly tell it. But I think it's important, Commissioners, to get roads that haven't been maintained in years back to the property owners. They're the ones that either are maintaining them, or, you know, pasturing them, or farming them, or whatever it is, and I, and I'll tell you, it's just, you know, we're faced with this on another one that I will bring up later, but when our county maps are out there and it shows no road, we have a Amish community now that pushes to get them open, and this road needs vacated, because it's been brought to my attention, and we can never afford to reopen this road.
Sure. Do I hear a motion to approve the vacate of Roland Road?
I'll make the motion to vacate Roland Road, 4,277 feet from Marion Road until the dead end at .81 miles.
Have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. What brings this up, and I'll make a real quick update before we get to the others. Beach Church Road, the portion that is between 246 and Ormond Road, only goes back so far, and it's dead ended, oh, actually, on both ends. I've researched, Commissioner Lowe has researched in regard to a safety issue for the Amish community of reopening that road. Commissioners, from the Highway Department standpoint, I just have a rough estimate of running a dozer through it, just to get it where I could open it up, get my machines in there. It was estimated between $15,000 and $30,000, Commissioners. I, the Highway Department cannot stand that type of cost just to open that road. Now, Mr. Lowe has an alternative, but I just wanted to state that's part of the reason I brought Roland to your attention today.
If I can, I'd like to add to that. Certainly Roland Road isn't an option to open. Walked it, it's terrible. And I understand the position that the county's in as far as reopening this section of road. I'm working with our attorney, and I have got with the Amish community, and with my involvement, my time, my equipment, their time and their equipment, we anticipate opening this road, to the point at which the county can at that time stone it, do some culvert work, and things of that nature. We're doing that as a community to help, help keep the smaller children of the Amish community off the road, off State Road 246, to be precise. So I'm working on that. I think with their help, my contribution, and anybody else's willing to help, we'll make this project happen. But it's, I'm going to work with the attorney to find out the legalities of this. I haven't met any resistance from superintendent on this idea, nor have I Commissioner Burton, or I don't really think Bob cares, but that's where I'm looking to go with this. So maybe, maybe not, but that's where we're planning on going with this. And that road will be brought back and be put back on road miles again once completed. So while we're deleting on one end, we hope to add back some others.
And no, Joe, you're right. I have no problem supporting what you're wanting to do. I just don't want to put the expense on the county highway.
Well, and that's where I'm at, Gary. I wasn't, you know, once the numbers came in, there was, there was no chance we was gonna, we was gonna spend that kind of money on it. So we're going to take a different avenue, and maybe we can come to a resolve.
I want to jump back to Roland Road here real quick, Greg. We'll have to do an ordinance on that at the next meeting and finalize it, but we will, as Commissioners, we'll go ahead and sign this for you today, so you have record at the Highway Department of this particular road. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioners, I'd like to read in more roads in the inventories, miles added, miles deleted. We're going to do Jennings Township. We'll do Oak Road first. There's photographs for you to view if you want to look at this portion of Oak, but we will be adding .10 miles or 535 feet. Commissioners, there's a road up near the county line on State Road 42 that does not have a name. It has a route ID. This road does not exist. It may be one like... It may be one like Roland Road, so it may need an ordinance, but again, no name, but it is on inventory, so we need to remove this.
What's the distance of that road? Do we know? It's not been measured because it can't pass.
It's not been measured, because it just doesn't, not even Roland you could actually measure, we can't, I can't even get this thing measured, so it just...
Just bring it to us at the next meeting and get it off of there.
And it has photographs. We'll go ahead and hand that to them, and that way Dana can have that. Okay, gentlemen, Buckskin Road had no change at 1.69 miles. Lutz Road had no change at .92 miles. Maze Road had a change of .6 miles. Cut Through Road, no change at 1.10 miles. Pumpkin Ridge, no change at 2.90 miles. Campato, no change at 3.12. Owen Park, no change at 1.72. Hickory Road, no change at 1.01 miles. Dixie Hill Road, no change at .25 miles. Shortcut Road, positive at 1, excuse me, .16 miles. Qnot Cataract Road, no change at 2.43 miles. North Cataract Road, no change at 1.54 miles. South Cataract, no change at . Old Cuba Road, to .53 miles. South Cataract to US 231, no change at .1, .10 miles. Ponderosa Road has a change of .2 miles. Okay, there's a dead end portion that's listed as the South Cataract Road that may need renamed, gentlemen, but we need to add .38 miles to this road, and it's route number And it is a dead end road maintained by the county. Ponderosa Road, .92 miles, no change, and Oak Road, the section between Brenneman Road, and it is .13 miles or 660 feet, no change, and that's where we're talking about that little Y in the road at the end. Gentlemen, that is Jennings Township.
Thank you, Greg. I know we've got a few more of these to go, but if we can knock them out here and there, that way we'll get them done.
Yeah, they need that. Commissioners, I have...
They don't matter where it starts.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, move to contract purchase deeds, and we got several of these. Dana can start going through those.
Just to refresh everyone's memory, in Everdick County, Owen's a deed to a property that they got in the act sale, they didn't offer no sale to the adjacent property owners, and they bid against one another, and used the highest bid with one. Some events there are two bids, and if there is, then they get a chance to use it as well. So the first property, and these were already approved to be transferred, so what you'd be doing today is approving Mr. Burton to sign the deed in the self-disclosure agreement associated with it. So the first property is located at 1039010 High Road, Oakland, Indian. It has a parcel number of 60-03-33-22-50.65-219. That property is being sold to Brandon Hazer, who was only bitter for that parcel. Next parcel is on Everdick Road, and has the parcel number 60-04-36-400-10000-019. And that property is being transferred to John R. Hunter and Julia Calhoun. The Hazer is buying that property for $250, that was his bid, and the Hinters, for the Everdick Road property, barely over $500.
I'm missing that for some reason.
And the third one is Pond Road, located at Pond Road, and it has the... It has the parcel ID number of 60-03-31-100-120.00-019. Again, that's Pond Road, and that is keying to Gerald Hensel, Gerald Hensel, and for the amount of $100. So the only relief is for the Commissioners to vote to authorize Mr. Burton to sign the deeds and so.
So that being said, gentlemen, do I hear a motion to approve the President to sign these special warranty deeds for these tax properties as mentioned by counsel?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Bob, second by Joel.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, Dana, you got some more stuff there?
Next, there is a parcel that we talked about, that property that Owen County owns on Rocky Hill Road, 780 Rocky Hill Road, and the parcel immediately to the east of it is Land Lot, and it is owned by Betty, Betty Blaker, and throughout the years, they had crossed the boundary property to get there. They've got a letter and something that said was an easement, which was just a license for it to be used for certain people, which no longer fits. So the Betty Blaker is in the process of trying to sell the property, but the title company and the banks won't work with the property that has no road access. So they requested to have an easement through that county property, and the county property ID is 60-10-17-400-370.000-027, and the Blaker parcel is 60-10-16-300-320-027. A site visit was conducted, and there was a discussion with the purchasers of the Blaker property about where would be a good location to have an easement, it'd be a 30-foot easement, and so that, they proposed the location. There is concern because of the radio tower there, that it might not want that affected. This would be a fairly good distance away and down slope, so it'd be difficult for them to give into any guide wire or anything like that. So while this is being given for no consideration, there is the possibility that they could bring a lawsuit against the county, declaring that there would be an easement, have the court say that he has used it long enough, whatever it used. I think that because of the way those easements were written, that that would not fly, but there could be a lot of cost to the county in trying to fight that. So what's better is to grant an easement, and that, and then the county can put conditions on it, and which they couldn't do if the court declared an easement. So what's the, the name of the easement? But some of the conditions would be that the grantee and any subsequent owner of the dominant estate, the state that's being served is the dominant estate, so the Blakers the dominant estate, the servant estate would be the county property. So the grantee, the grantee and any subsequent owner of the dominant estate and its agents shall have the right of ingress and egress over the easement area on and across the land of the servant estate. And there is a survey that shows exactly where that is. Grantee shall be responsible for constructing and the normal routine maintenance and repair of the Crestone Drive on the easement. Further, the Crestone Drive constructed on the easement shall be maintained to the access of the radio tower located on the servant estate, and any further maintenance east of said location shall be at the discretion of the grantee. A grantee, this grantee shall be responsible for constructing and the normal routine maintenance and repair of a gate at the western end of the easement at Rocky Hill Road that is sufficient to block unauthorized ingress and egress onto the easement. Further, said gate shall be acquired with a lock, and grantee shall provide the key or other means to open said lock to grantor. Further, said gate shall be locked securely at all times except when grantee is active on the dominant estate. The grantee is going to have this as timber property, that there'll be selective timbering out over the years. The grantor covenants and agrees that the easement obtained herein shall run with the land and shall bind the grantor and their heirs, executors, administrators, successors, and assigns, and shall bind all present and subsequent owners of the easement identified herein. And ye, the parties further covenant and agree that all parties having an interest in the property which is subject to this deed of easement has executed this document and agreed to the terms hereof. And so the Commissioners wish to grant this deed of easement. It can be approved for Commissioner Burton to sign the deed of easement, and then we can get Betty Blaker's signature.
Thank you, Dana. And Dana is correct, there was a site visit, Bob, myself, and the attorney went out there with the potential purchasers, and come to an agreement, we're well far south of the guide wire on the tower. They're going to maintain the road with gravel, a gate, as Dana had mentioned. Our concern was a log truck possibly snagging the guide wire, pulling the tower down, and these things are possible in these type of situations, but we're far enough away, and not only that, our elevation, we are much lower than the cable that's buried in the ground, so if a truck did fall over, it wouldn't even come remotely close, so we verified all that with them. And Joel was unable to attend that meeting, but give us his blessing on whatever decision we decided, and that's how we've came to this agreement today. So that being said, if there's no other questions, Bob, I think you did request that they gravel out all the way to the end of the county property, is that correct?
Yes.
And I think that's in there, if I'm not mistaken, to that line.
What it was, was to the cell, to the tower, so that any access that we needed, but that from the tower to the edge of the property, had it, if they wanted to gravel it, they could.
Just to maintain the road.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering why it would connect to, what benefit would it be to the county? To think there's a benefit, I can, you can approve it that way, and I can make that edit.
You good where we're at?
Yeah.
Okay. With that being said, do I hear a motion to approve President's Board to sign this deed of easement?
I'll make that motion, sorry.
Have a motion by Bob, do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two more things.
He still signing?
Yep, couple more. Okay, this would be an ordinance adopting Owen County Code, Chapter 156, Unsafe Building and Premises Law, and if it gets passed, it would be 2024-003. This is a brand new chapter to the Owen County Code, and it's the unsafe building and premises law, and the, there's like 32-page-long ordinance, so of course I won't read that, but I will read the ordinance that says that they're adopting this chapter. So whereas in Owen County, there exists a number of occupied and unoccupied structures that are not maintained and that constitute a hazard to public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas vacant structures often become dilapidated because the structures are not maintained and repaired by the owners or persons in control of the structures. Whereas vacant structures attract children, become harborage for vermin, serve as temporary bodes for vagrants and criminals, and are likely to be damaged by ganges or set ablaze by arsonists. Whereas unkept grounds surrounding vacant structures invite dumping of garbage, trash, and other debris. Whereas many vacant structures are situated on small lots in close proximity to neighboring structures, thereby increasing the risk of blighted apes and spread of insect and rodent infestation and potential fire. Whereas vacant, deteriorated structures contribute to blight, causing decrease in property values, and discourage neighbors from making improvements to properties. Whereas structures that remain wired up for an extended period of time also exert a blighted influence and contribute to the decline of the neighborhood by decreasing property values, discouraging persons from moving into the neighborhood, and encouraging persons to move out of the neighborhood. Whereas vacant structures often tend to deteriorate to the point that demolition of the structure is required, thereby decreasing available housing in Owen County, and further contributing to the decline of the neighborhood. Whereas the blighted influence of vacant deteriorated structures adversely affects the tax revenues of Owen County. Whereas the Commissioners find that vacant deteriorated structures create a serious and substantial problem in Owen County and our public businesses. Whereas in recognition of the problems created in Owen County by vacant structures, the Commissioners find that vigorous and disciplined action should be taken to ensure proper maintenance and repair of vacant structures and premises. So, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen had determined that adopting Owen County Code, Chapter 156, Unsafe Building and Premises Law, as attached here too, is in the best interest of Owen County and its residents. Section one is adoption of Chapter 156. Section one is adoption of Chapter one fifty-six and section two is that the effective date, the ordinance shall become in full force and effect upon adoption and publication as required. And because there are penalties involved in this chapter, it will need to be published twice. So it would be enforced at after the second published. What this does, kind of briefly, is it lays out what a unsafe premises and building are. It lays out how they would get notices that there's violations, there would be penalties, fines associated, they would be given an appropriate amount of time to clean it up. And the, if they didn't, the county can take extra steps, going all the way to charging whatever funds the county uses to go in and clean something up to make it safe, can go against the tax on the property, just like any other property tax. And it can be foreclosed on like a mortgage lien. So there's that if we need to. Of course, some of the concern is that these properties are small and if you tore down the building, the lot probably is not going to be worth as much. All the funds collected and fines and penalties and such, and donations, if community, the community wants to help and to supply some funds to this, that's also allowed. This would all be put in a special unsafe building fund and would be used to clean up other properties and kind of perpetually refund itself to a certain extent. If this is passed to really be effective, it's going to need an enforcement officer. And so that, that being said, that's one thing that you do need to consider. And let's see, I think I've covered most of it. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, first of all Dana, we appreciate you putting this together. I know it's a lengthy document. It's something that's needed to be done for quite some time. I think we're going in the right direction to put all this into place. For those that don't know, we had an administrative meeting with the commissioners, the attorney, the Health Department, the Building Department, President of the Council to discuss this. And it's something that the county and the citizens of this county have wanted. I've heard it over and over again. We have small landfills all over this county and if we don't do something about it, we're going to turn into one big landfill. It affects property values. It harbors drugs, all kinds of different things. So I think it's an opportunity for us to move forward with this. With funding, spoke to the Sheriff Department in our conversation, and I've had that call as we discussed in our meeting, gentlemen. The Building Department through the storage units has a cash balance that's pretty healthy and we're willing to spend half of the salary for this officer out of that fund and have asked the Council to fund the other half. And I think Polly was in the process of working on that and seeing if that doesn't happen at their next meeting. And what this would be is a full-blown law officer, a deputy, speaking with the sheriff, trying to come up with a plan. We feel that it's best that this is an eight to five, five days a week job. They come in and deal with the county ordinance issues, violations, deal with those, and when those are done for the day, then they are on the road as a deputy. That way, we're not trying to split shifts, so on and so forth. Can't work ten-hour days on Monday and seven hours on Tuesday and those kind of things. So that's what Sheriff White recommended and I agree, I think that that's the best bet. That way, there's not a bunch of confusion. So anyway, with that being said, I think this is a good thing for the county to try to clean some of this stuff up. We have a property, and I think Sam might have been involved in this down in Freedom, that had several dogs and rats and all kinds of issues down there. We've got eighty-six thousand dollars worth of tax on that property and we're never going to collect that kind of money out of it. And this is the kind of stuff that will stop those things from happening or going to that full length. So that being said, do I hear a motion to approve ordinance? You said oh, three, twenty twenty-four zero zero three? An ordinance adopting Owen County Code, Chapter one fifty-six, unsafe building and premises law.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And continuing on with this discussion, if I can, Council, and if I'm incorrect, let me know please.
I would like to go ahead and make the, ask for a motion for the approval of the storage unit through Building Department to pay half of the enforcement officer's wages. That way, that can go ahead and be approved and moved on to Council.
I'll make the motion that we use a storage building income to pay for half of the law enforcement officer that will enforce ordinance twenty twenty-four zero zero three.
Thank you Joel. Have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
All right Dana.
Fund number forty fifteen.
Forty fifteen, fund number. Thank you Sheila.
And some people might think, okay, we hear about first readings and second readings and what does that mean? An ordinance can pass the first time it's read by a unanimous vote. If it was a two oh vote, then it would be considered a first reading and would be considered again at the following meeting. So since it was a unanimous vote, it did not need to go through the first reading and second reading process. Finally, we've been working to update the drug and alcohol use free workplace policy, personnel policy. And the policies we have are vague or inconsistent with one another. So this would be a policy to everyone would be part of. It gives different ways that people can be drug tested. There'll be a random cycle. There will be a, if there's reasonable suspicion somebody is, that can be determined in writing and they can do a drug test. All accidents or that involve personal injury or property of Owen County injury damage would be sent to get a drug screen as well. And so there's a variety of ways that having a drug screen might come up. I did work with Christine and the Health Department on what types of things that they test for, and so I included those. And in discussing this with Commissioner Burton, I think you believe this would be good to send out to the department heads and as a draft and get their input and bring it back to the commissioners. If they have any, bring it back to the commissioners at your next meeting.
Yeah, I don't want to take a vote on this and sign it until the departments get a chance to look at it, you know, whether we've ended it or not, but I feel like they need to be involved and at least take a look and see what we're dealing with. I'm going to touch on something real briefly. We've had some problems and issues with more than one department with the gummies or the CBD or whatever that they sell. Those have THC in them, which is an illegal substance. And there's a fine line, is it legal, is it not legal? We sell them over the counter, but yet they have illegal drugs in them. So that is addressed in this document because THC is not allowed. So just wanted to bring that up because it seems to be a subject that's come up several times.
Well, I think it needs serious consideration in the fact that yeah, any grocery store or convenience store, I should say, when we recant that, you can buy Delta Eights, gummies, things of that nature. Folks, THC is an illegal drug. I don't care if they sell it in Indiana or not. Right now, the state of Indiana is trying to ban the sale of Delta Eights within this state. Okay? I can go buy alcohol legally. That doesn't allow me to drink six of them and drive down the road. It's an illegal substance. People can no longer stand on laurels, they bought it down at the Circle K. It doesn't make it right. This is an important part, and I hope that, I hope the department heads take a real close look at this because what these folks are buying over the counter, it's showing up in their bloodstream. I guarantee it. It's fact. From personal experiences in my life, I can tell you it's fact.
Some may try to argue that CBD oil technically doesn't contain THC.
It does not.
And it doesn't, but it is an extremely common contaminant.
The, the Delta Eights however will, and they can be bought at convenience stores within this state. So you might heed looking over these real good because I think people will try to use the defense that they bought it at the local convenience store. That doesn't make it legal.
You can't go by their label that says it's a hundred percent pure either, because there's no regulation of that they can put on there with.
So that's one of the reasons we're sending this policy out to every department, so everybody's got a fair opportunity. Nobody can come back and say, hey, you blindsided us with this. No, we didn't. We're giving everybody opportunity. Appreciate the Health Department working with us on this.
Absolutely.
One thing that's been brought up to my attention, and I don't think it's a problem addressing, is we've talked about using in-house with our Health Department to save the county money. Why wouldn't we? The only recommendation is the Health Department employees would have to go outside to get their test and come back in. All these results would go to the department head as well as the Board of Commissioners whenever there's a test. So just heads up on that as you're going through the policy.
And so in the policy, you'll see it says that the commissioner's designated person and to start off with, you're designating yourselves to run this and tell you, determine it the best way. Sometimes you get a HR manager or something, they will run it.
And once we get to that point, that will change, but I think right now, we're looking at the Health Department to oversee this through the authority of the commissioners. And I think that that's the best avenue to go, and I know that we've discussed that a little bit, and I think that we're in favor of that. Once, once we get a complete signed policy, then we'll move forward on those decisions. But again, Christine, we thank you for your input here. And it's a several-page document, so. Anything else?
Nope, that's enough.
Okay. We're to elected officials.
Jack?
Yeah, I've got something. First of all, I congratulate the commissioners on the heating system in here. Outdone yourselves.
You are welcome, Jack.
And the next thing I'd like to say is the Health Department has always, they've got a longstanding tradition of supporting the Emergency Management Office. Sheila was fantastic at it when she was there and Christine has picked up right where Sheila left it off. They purchased a new ID system for us. Our old system is failing and social signs of age, and I expressed that to Christine, and she, she come through and helped us out. And that helps every department in Owen County, including some of the fire departments that need, need matched. And so I'd like to thank the Health Department for that. And also with the upcoming Eclipse planning that we've been doing and some of the, I'm not good at all at digital marketing stuff, to put out a digital thing on Facebook or anything, and they've helped me with that. They provided two employees, Alan and Tori, to help us with Eclipse planning and they just don't seem to be able to do enough on me. I would appreciate it. I'm going to bring that to you guys attention.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Are we getting that also put out on our county website? Do we know, I mean, is anybody working on that avenue?
We're.
Go ahead, Chris. Jack?
I thought Chris was going to say something. The last Eclipse meeting we had, and from the beginning, we have asked everybody that's in those meetings to put out the same message. And in this last meeting, Sheriff White kind of grabbed the bull by the horns and he's going to be putting it out in the county website, was mentioned, we also mentioned the, using the maybe TH live thing that Suzanne does, kind of hitting everything social media-wise that we can. We're giving the, all the disciplines and agencies a few weeks to get their bullet points out that they, that they want to express. And then on March first, we have another meeting and Sheriff White will be putting that out at that time.
Our website is editable, if that's a word, by every department. And anybody that needs that training or wants that information, I'll make sure that that happens. We have to go to a separate site, then go into our county website, and you can put on there whatever you want to, based on your department. I know some people's been involved in that, I think Sheila was early on, maybe way back when. This goes back a few years back, but go ahead, Chris.
To answer your question about the county website, I've been working with Suzanne on that.
She's really good at that stuff.
Yeah, 'cause she's a, I can do it. In fact, we did the R E M S page, but I'm slow on it. To go on what Jack said, we want to make sure the same information's going out, that we're, that we're all on the same page. So I've reached out to Marcy King, get some information from her, and hopes to have the same stuff, same information on the county's website that she has on her website. So we are working on that through Suzanne.
And she is extremely good at that stuff, and I'm sure she'll help in any way that she, she can, so. No, sounds real good. Anyone else? Sheila? Joel?
I'm good.
Bob? We are going to put that on hold. We, I'll mention that real quick since Joe bypassed it. We had a, working on the generator. We have struggled very, very badly with trying to get a contractor to help us with this. We've had, Elite will no longer answer our phone calls, they're covered up. Cassidy Electric came over, gave us a quick look, they're covered up. We brought in Woods Electric, we have an estimate from them. Joel being the expertise that he is in these type of ventures is extremely high, so he's going to contact them and have a discussion and see what we can do to reduce that or have another discussion.
Well, I, I think it's important to clarify the error here. I sold that unit to Owen County. There was never an intent for media installment. Never. I was to work with Elite Electric with this, and they are extremely busy. And I take nothing from them. They've done a lot of work in here. We initially chose them because they know more about the electricity in this courthouse than anybody. Unfortunately, they're so busy, they cannot do it. Steve's reached out, as Gary said, to Cassidy, they're, they're too busy. Woods has come in with an estimate. I'm going to look it over and have discussion with them. But, but the fact of the matter is, it has not, it has not been hooked up yet. And we're, we're trying to work on it and get it, get the problem resolved, but we're having difficulty. So bear with us, we'll get it. I will talk to Woods Electric about the quote and its entirety, and we're going to find out what's going on, so.
And as I told Joel earlier, and I think everybody here on this board seen it, there was an email out at one time or social media, I can't remember which, talking about, a while back, we had a power outage and the generator failed. Of course it failed, it's not hooked up.
It didn't, it didn't fail.
So whatever opinion that somebody has, they need to know what they're talking about before they put those kind of comments out there. You're correct.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to make the clarification, because indeed, it doesn't work. It, it is not hooked up.
Yeah.
We are working to get that resolved. We've gone through several different ideas of how we were going to hook it up, what we were going to run. It's come down to now, it's going to run vital circuits, which was the full intent to begin with through this whole thing. We can't run this courthouse in its entirety, the county can't afford that big a generator. However, going back for years, and Sam was involved in this years ago, we're trying to run the vitals, we're trying to keep the doors open and the lights on. That's what we're going to do here, folks. And so we're working on it to get it resolved, so. We're going to take care of it.
Thank you.
Please keep circle room line, I have no inner, I have cell pressure, circle room's dead.
And we know that.
Number one on our list.
And we know that.
I didn't hear it mentioned, so I thought.
The, the idea here, some may understand what I'm about to say, Sam may not, may not. We're going to run single-phase circuitry only in this building. We're not going to run the heating and the cooling. For short-term outages, eight hours, ten hours, twenty-four hours, we'll be okay. People can put coats on or, or fan themselves. we'll be okay. People can put coats on or fan themselves. So, having said that, the server room will be up, and that's vital for your situation. So.
If you wanna come into courthouse and take care of business.
You're gonna be able to take care of it.
You're gonna be able to take care of your business, whether it be the clerk's office, the auditor's office, wherever it may be. The computer systems will be up and running. The only thing I have is ADA Consulting, we have our first invoice here, and Sheila, you'll have to help me on this, because this was budgeted back during budget hearings. And did I add this to the Commissioner Contract Service Line, or where did we, it's not from Q cap?
It's in other services.
Other services. So, we've got our first bill, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Want to go ahead and get that taken care of. They're in the process of now working down at the jail, the sheriff's office, the deputies' buildings, those type of things. This is a long process, and I don't want anybody to get excited about what needs to be done, and what doesn't need to be done. It may be two or three years before any of these issues are dealt with, but we have to get it all in black and white, and if we don't, state and federal government shut our funding off. So, we're gonna do what needs to be done, we'll do it properly. A big problem that we have here is the building that we're in is a historical building, so we've got issues on how we move forward with that. Again, we're talking down the road. We have approved, if I'm not mistaken, going back forty thousand dollars a year for this study for the next three years. It was a total of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, am I correct, Counsel?
Yes.
Jack is a big part of this. I've sat in on a few meetings, I've talked to David personally. I know Dana's involved, so we're gonna continue to move forward. As these reports come out, they'll be held until everything is completed. So, anyway, with that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by myself, second.
By Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. And I'm still working.